Hi, can I have a roll call please?
Doug, here, Mallory.
Here.
Mel, here, Darlene.
Here.
Edwin.
Here.
Martin.
Here.
Ormey.
Here.
Alright, now please stand and join me in collective leadership. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. I will continue to advocate for our citizens' rights. Order, nation, honor, and justice, and we will not speak against justice for all. Agenda I O's, so now, open now, please stand and state your name and your reading please.
Scott Waring, I want to speak to A now. Of course, one of the mills that would make me a second if you get to it, but. Putting forward because this represents the distance from my bedroom window that started this jury. Right, and it's about this same angle that I could come out of that when you catch people with their hoover pipes, whatever pipes they are, staring up into my bedroom window. But without further ado, if you can start the plot. Um, my name's Scott Waring, I live at one eighty-two Riverside Drive, here tonight as a neighbor. I'm named defendant with two lawsuits and a citizen who expects this city to stand behind its laws and its people. Let's be honest about what's happened. A property owner who was told repeatedly and fairly that short-term rounds are not permitted in the R one zone has now decided the law shouldn't apply to them. They have sued the city, the planning commission, the zoning board of appeals, city staff, the neighbors, and even a Facebook page. This isn't accountability, it's intimidation by litigation. And when the court didn't rule in their favor fast enough, they turned to the court of public opinion. They filed dozens of FOIA requests, blasted misinformation on social media, compiled nine hundred and fifty-seven megabytes, online exhibit library, trying to smear anyone who stood up for the rule of law. The goal is obvious, if you can't win through proper channels, then bury the opposition in paperwork, public records and personal attack until someone caves. People are thinking. But here's the problem, the city has a legal obligation, and I would argue on moral duty, to enforce its zoning code without fear or favor. The law doesn't bend for those with time and money or an internet connection. It applies equally to everyone, we know that, I know we know. And when the planning commission and the ZBA said no to rezoning, no to reuse Gary, they were right to do so. That decision upheld the will of the people and protected the R one character that brought many of us to Sheboygan in the first place. The plan is now going to selectively enforce them. But they admit their own filings, they ran the business for two years without a P D. In a district where it's clearly not allowed. It's not discrimination that's catching, it's catching someone who didn't follow the move. I know this council is under pressure. You're named in lawsuits, you're targeted in public comments, but I hope you feel the support of the community, the people who live here, who vote here, and who follow the law. We need you to defend your decisions, we need you to defend your staff. We need you to defend your citizens. Because if this strategy works, if threatening lawsuits and public spectacle can overturn zoning decisions, then no neighborhood in Sheboygan is safe. Don't let that be the legacy of the moment, please. I'm asking for three things tonight. Authorize full legal resources to defend against Mark's circuit court appeal. Commit publicly to defending this case vigorously and winning it because the city's legal position is strong and the facts are on your side.
You say a five, oh, one more, publicly, please publicly reaffirm that R one zoning means what it says, no exceptions,
no negotiation, that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
I'll leave this with you, so. You don't need an F O I, you can share that with me.
Any other public comments on agenda I O's? Okay, I'll follow this portion up, public comments. And we will move on to approval of agenda and receive and file all communications.
So move.
I will second that. I have a motion by Councilwoman Mills, second by Councilman Martin, to approve the agenda and receive and file all communications. Any comments, additions? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion passed, we have six, approval of prior eighty minutes from July eighth, twenty twenty-five. I'm making a motion to accept the previous prior minutes of July eighth. Okay, I have a motion by Councilman Martin, second by Councilman Hornby to approve the regular city council meeting minutes of July eighth, twenty twenty-five presented. Does anybody want to add to that? Got it, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passed, we have seven, A. Uh, so I will open this public hearing, this is for an amendment to the brownfield plan for the property located at two two five North Main Street, Sheboygan, Michigan, owned by Dionysus Twenty Twenty LLC. Are there any public comments on this? Okay. Then I will close the public hearing for seven A, and move on to um, opening the public hearing for seven B. This is a public hearing to consider an application for an obsolete property rehabilitation exemption certificate for Dionysus Twenty Twenty LLC at two two five North Main Street. Do I have any public comments for that? Okay, I will close that public hearing as well, and move on to open the public hearing in seven C. This is a public hearing to repeal section fifty-one dot six seven and replace with an updated version of section five one dot six seven of chapter fifty-one, sewers of the sh- city of Sheboygan codified ordinance to reflect revised timelines for lean placement and to establish an appeals process for utility billing and service disconnections. Grand summary, comments on that? Okay. I will close that public hearing as well. Uh, eight A, we have consideration of the amendment to the brownfield plan for the property located at two two five North Main Street, Sheboygan, Michigan. How many of them?
Second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Darling, second by Councilwoman Mills, to approve the amendment to the brownfield plan for the property located at two two five North Main Street, Sheboygan, Michigan, owned by Dionysus Twenty LLC. Does anybody have any comments on that?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah. Yep.
Um, the original brownfield plan was uh, passed over four years ago. Uh, and then also the Opros passed four years ago. Um, so we uh, took the opportunity, I know council asked me to do this, so we took the opportunity to review uh, both of those documents, and the project has changed a little bit, but uh, overall, the breakdown of the project is, they're gonna have a two hundred and ninety thousand dollar loan from the citizens' bank, two different loans make up that amount. An M E D C grant of three hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. Um, cash from the owner is a hundred and sixty thousand, three hundred and eighty-three dollars. Um, the building is put in into the deal for a total of eight hundred and sixty-three thousand, three hundred and eighty-three dollars. Um, prior, there was an Oprah approved for twelve years out of a hundred, at a hundred percent. Um, based on private investment, um, staff is recommending a three-year Oprah instead, so that would shorten it by nine years, um, with the savings to the city of about, I believe, about seventy, about seventy thousand dollars, okay? Then what happens when the Oprah's done, the brownfield takes over, okay? And the brownfield, the old one was, I believe, thirteen years, and it was gonna be for a hundred and seventy thousand, remember, brownfield, the owner of the property pays in the difference for taxes. Between this hand is what the taxes are, this is what the new one is, the difference between the two hands. Uh, they pay that in, and then that money's redirected back to them to pay for brownfield redevelopment, such as demolition, asbestos removal, mold removal, things along that line. Well, the scope of the project has changed once it was examined, uh, now they're seeking sixty-seven thousand dollars to be captured between these hands, so it doesn't need to be thirteen years, uh, so actually it's going to be six years instead. Uh, and that's what the new brownfield plan says, instead of being uh, with thirteen years and a twelve-year Oprah, it's a three-year Oprah and a six-year brownfield. Um, estimated cost savings by revisiting this, I've requested counsel, I'm guessing somewhere around a hundred and seventy thousand over twenty-five years. That's what we would have, that would have cost the city over twenty-five years to do this. Uh, great project, it's one of the last properties in the area, um, so I am, the staff is a hundred percent behind both of these items uh, that we passed this, and then we can get them uh, moving on that project as soon as possible. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Do I have any comments?
Just so people know, it's the old Johnson Studio, correct?
Correct.
I have a question, but before I ask, I do wanna move the podium back so everyone can see and hear everyone clearly. Um, if we grant the Oprah for three years, does the three-year exemption start when they finish the project or as soon as we grant it?
It starts uh, when it is finished. However, if it doesn't start within a, I believe, a year, we can revoke a settlement.
So for the last four years, they haven't seen any taxes?
Correct. Uh, the, it started uh, at that, that one when it was passed, it started, but never fully initiated, so if it even started at that point, they would only have nine years left available. So they got no economic benefit if that's the, the question is. If it doesn't get through, go through, they get no economic benefit, they don't get the end of the grant. I mean, if they don't go forward with the project.
Okay, anything else? Okay, roll call please.
Martin.
Yes.
Edwin.
Yes.
Ormski.
Yes.
Darlene.
Yes.
Doug.
Yes.
Mallory.
Yes.
Mel.
Yes.
Okay, motion passed, eight B, we have the approval of an interlocal agreement between the Sheboygan Brownfield Redevelopment Authority and the Sheboygan Downtown Development Authority. Oh, it is interlo-
I will listen uh, as soon as you guys make your.
Make that motion.
Okay. Alright, so I have a motion by uh, Councilwoman Mills, second by Councilwoman Dodd, to approve the interlocal agreement between the Sheboygan Brownfield Redevelopment Authority and the Sheboygan Downtown Development Authority, outlining the terms and conditions for the capture and use of tax increment revenues in accordance with the amended brownfield plan.
This was another thing, I found, uh, there was a couple things that weren't done right the first time this went through, this is one of them. Uh, because Johnson Studio lies in the B B A, any money that's collected there, years ago, we passed a D B A TIF plan, so any of the new improvements in that area between what all the values and property in the D B A are now, and then when they go to, that, that money is captured, incented to the D B A for operations, okay? So if that money's being captured and sent to the D B A, and this program of brownfield captures that money and sends it back to the developer, we're paying two people, maybe that's a good way to split, you're right, we're paying two people out of the same pot of money that's not there. So what they needed to do is have the D B A say, it's okay if you direct the money between my two arms to this developer to pay for brownfield. And then the D B A had a vote, so they voted and said, yes, they'll do this. The brownfield voted, yes, we're gonna enter into this agreement, but that agreement needs to be ratified by you guys ultimately to approve that transfer a month. Other than that, we're gonna be paying the, the developer back, and we were gonna be sending money to the, the D D A, and so somewhere that money would have had to come out of, that would have been a problem, but it, actually, if that project went, we would have a real problem on our hands. Uh, so we caught that, and that, and we've corrected that, so now, those two agencies are three. The D B A said, yes, we can redirect my money to the developer. You guys just need to ratify that what those two parties agreed to is the, the general agreement.
Okay, any other questions on that? Okay, roll call please.
Ormey.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Edwin.
Yes.
Darlene.
Yes.
Mel. Mallory.
Yes.
Doug.
Yes.
Alright, motion passed, eight C, consideration to approve an obsolete property rehabilitation exemption certificate for two two five North Main Street.
I'll make a motion to approve an obsolete property rehabilitation exemption certificate for two twenty-five North Main Street, Sheboygan, Michigan, four nine seventeen one, for three years.
I will second that. Okay, I have a motion by Councilman Edwin, second by Councilman Martin, to approve an obsolete property rehabilitation exemption certificate for two two nine, or two two five, North Main Street, Sheboygan, Michigan, for three years, do we need to uh, add, add a hundred percent to that motion?
Uh, yes, please, if you don't mind.
Okay. Add a hundred percent, add one hundred percent.
For three years.
For three years, three years, hundred percent, thank you. Does anybody have any questions on that? Okay, that's what our guidelines that, that we adopted basically said. Um, three years would be the appropriate amount uh, of length, like the time that it did for some of us.
Said it was one hundred and sixty-seven thousand, right, you know, so?
It's, if you count the loan, I, I, I think it should be three, if you count the loan and that, because we really don't know, there is no end user for the lower space, because it's one year for every hundred and fifty thousand in private investment, or one year for every two jobs created, we don't know how many jobs are gonna be created, but we do know the investments about. When you add all that together, it's a little under four hundred and fifty thousand, so, that's why I rounded up the three and said, I think that's, that's appropriate, and that's also what you need to kind of make it still work uh, for the, the bank and for uh, the, the developer.
I'll be certain one edge work. Any other questions, the comments? Okay, roll call please.
Mallory.
Yes.
Mel.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Ormski.
Yes.
Darlene.
Yes.
Darlene.
Yes.
Doug. Yes.
Okay, motion passed, eight D, we have consideration to repeal section fifty-one point six seven and replace with an updated version of section five one dot six seven of chapter fifty-one, sewers. And uh, do you think I wanna make that motion?
I have a motion to consideration or repeal section five one point six seven, or if it's not being adjusted, second. Five one one six seven of chapter fifty-one.
Close it. Okay, I have a motion by Councilman Martin, second by Councilwoman Dodd, to repeal section fifty-one dot six seven and replace with an updated version of section fifty-one dot six seven of chapter one, sewers of the city of Sheboygan codified ordinance is to reflect revised timelines for lean placement and to establish an appeals process for utility billing and service disconnections. Okay, yeah.
Um, mainly we improve the look and the functioning of this ordinance. And then, one of the main reasons was, actually, we had citizens say, hey, look, you guys have not been taking uh, the liquid water and sewer bills to council until June, and then the old ordinance, I believe, it's in March. Um, and I said, yep, they're right, but if you remember, by us making that change, and we've done it for, I think, the last three or four years, uh, by doing that last year, we, we used to have a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the liquid water and sewer bills. By giving those extra couple months, we took it down to fifty. So, which is substantial. That's less work on the county, it's less work on our staff, um, and that allows customers to be able to take care of their bills before it's put a lien on the property tax. So that's the main reason why we did this, we put some appeals things in there, we also put some uh, flexibility for us to work with people uh, that may have an issue or question their water bill, so they have a chance to appeal them. Um, because too often times it falls on Alyssa or whoever answers the phone, Alex or whatever, uh, to, you know, get into with somebody, and then they're like, well, what can we do about it, well, well, this kind of gives them, say, hey, you can file an appeal. Um, so we're, we're, we're making it a little more friendly, we're, we're making it tight, but we're also given the flexibility to allow us to help the customers out, if we can, in certain situations.
That makes sense? Do you have any comments on that?
I do.
I do.
Number C on your two, says request for payment extensions or waivers will not be considered. All moving votes regarding the accuracy of the bill will be reviewed. If not made, the customer does not request a hearing as outlined above, utility service will be discontinued as scheduled. So they can't, there's, they can't get extensions or waivers of any kind, say they.
We've always allowed people to make payments. So if somebody comes in and says they enter into a compliance agreement, says, hey, we're gonna pay X amount of dollars per month, and if they keep up with that, then we can allow them to move on. But if they say, hey, we want this wave, we, we can't waive it, there are certain situations we can. Uh, I, I know I've brought stuff in here, I think one was Walstrom, I believe, we brought in here at one point, where we knew something broke somewhere, uh, because their water meter was spinning like crazy, so it allows us to be flexible, uh, and, and work with people, I think, and, and then I think this is about as generous that we can be without, you know, we can't start leaving bills.
And then their last part, um, is that they'll, they will give fourteen game notice before shut off.
Correct. Well, either, well, I think we'll do both, we'll send the letter, register it, and it says to, if it's a landlord situation, tenant, both we'd get it, we also have a door hangers that we put on the thing so that they, it's right on the door.
Is it? I was told it was a label to treat the people without water, is that correct?
It's not, if you, if you don't pay, you can't live in a place if, if, sorry, you can't live in a place unless there's water. Sorry. So, and you can shut water sewer off. Oh, and I'll be honest with you, in the past, it really wasn't done a lot, there was uh, some uh, folks on staff that said, well, that's not the right thing to do, blah, blah, and they would just leave it on. Uh, but I think we're getting to the point where, hey, look, you've gotta collect their money, we gotta waste water treatment to play, pay for, we got wells to pay for, we gotta, we gotta collect their money, I mean, I, I hate to say it, and, and just like if you didn't pay your income tax, or you're gonna, you know, come after you at some point too, so, that's kind of, I, it's, it's a part of the job I don't think any of us really love, uh, but it allows us to, hey, look, you gotta do this, and I think a lot of times, most of the time when people get that notice, somehow money comes available and they pay it.
And I, I already know that you guys help people out, kind of the best you can, if there's a line, there's something, or you gotta be reasonable about.
One of the things the staff is very good at, there was a program uh, out there, and I, I don't know if they still have money or not, um, that we would send people to, that would help them pay their water and sewer bills and get them caught up. So, we would actually connect them, say, okay, here's a number, call them, then we'd get something from them, and then we'd have to fill out the paperwork and send it back to them, and then we'd get a check from that agency to catch it, so we'd work with people to try to find sources of funds to help them get it out, so that is a last resort, absolute last resort.
Any other comments on this?
In, part D, section four. So we should set by speed, which in resolution, we should, okay, we setting that?
Well, I believe we, the last time we updated the resolution, um, I think this was, maybe right before you got on the council, we need to revisit that, because we passed a resolution that, help me out Diane, I think we, we raised rates every year by a certain percent.
One, three percent every year.
We have how much it is per gallon, we have how much it is to, to turn the water back on, and if you ask to do it on a weekend or after hours, it's just much more, so we do have a whole resolution. But we'll, we're in the process of revisiting that, uh, and I think it may be fine, because we were kind of proactive in that. Good question.
Nothing else? Okay, roll call please.
Mel.
Yes.
Art.
Yes.
Darlene.
Yes.
Ormski.
Yes.
Darlene.
Yeah.
Doug.
Yes.
Mallory.
Yes.
Motion passed, we have eight E, consideration of permit transfer. This is for medical and recreational marijuana permits. I'll make a motion to sue the permit transfer for the recreational marijuana. What's that? Okay. I have a motion by Councilman Martin, second by Councilwoman Darling, to approve the transfer of medical and recreational marijuana permits for one, two, three State App Co. LLC to Sheboygan Property Group LLC. Can you tell them about those?
Pretty.
So it's.
Um, just according to our ordinance, um, when you have one entity transferring the permits over to another entity, it does have to come in front of council to be approved. We've done this before with Sozo and Met's Cafe when they switched over, so the um, new LLC of Sheboygan Property Group LLC would be taken over from one, two, three State App Co., just changing hands, following ordinance procedure.
Yep, and this is the Woods, right, and.
Yes, it's, it's, right now, it's to live well, it was the Woods, and then I want to live well, and right.
I know, somebody was telling me that there was a sign sitting out there, uh, that they're gonna put out, maybe change this.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think they're doing some rebranding.
Did they give a reason to this?
I think it went from multiple owners to one of them.
If they're changing, I, I'm not completely sure what it was, I know I did talk to, um, the young lady who um, is in the law office for this LLC, and I, I think they're just changing who's in their LLC and who's not.
I'm here representing the.
Oh.
Big question, I can answer him.
My question was, are any of these the same?
Yes, for the same people, um.
The same?
Yeah, um, yeah, I can come to something. I'm uh, I'm Alexander Hughes, we're, we were uh, one of the, one of the founders of, co-founders of the Woods. We, you know, we were the first ones to open here in twenty twenty. Um, we had an opportunity, the company, Live Well, to uh, to take over our business, which we did, and we kind of, you know, sort of read as that decision, and then we got the opportunity to get the business back, it didn't do very well here. Um, so we took that opportunity, so it'll be us back, coming back here, um. We're gonna do our best to retain all the employees that are, that are working there, um, through this transaction, and uh, yes, we decided back from this, in this town, by the community. Okay, then, you can best run it now, probably, yes, thank you.
And we.
We should, he was talking about six.
I think it's the right five, or is it, I think it's. I think this would, the one, for the thing, lack of, well, in KFC, I think that was fine. So, yeah, it's fine.
Okay. Any other questions on permit transfer? I think roll call please.
Martin.
Yes.
Edwin.
Yes.
Ormski.
Yeah.
Darlene.
Yes.
Doug.
Yes.
Mallory.
Yes.
Mel.
Yes.
It ma- I think it makes it four, I think the fifth one, I'm not sure if they still have their license, the one that was across the river by Tamar, I'm not sure if it still has theirs or not.
Off the car. These boats were a little while now changing name, um, and then, yeah, so. Was it about with someone?
It's, he said that, that's a four.
It's a four.
So, yes. I just don't know, you would know better than, than that, the one across, across from Tamar, so they don't still have them.
No, yeah.
They surrender, alright. I know they shuttered, sometimes they keep them.
Yeah, sometimes they go, I think there were ones in the, trying to redefine.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, that motion passed, we're on eight, that. Freedom of Information Act, the Fools Discussion Court Action. Anybody have anything?
Um, especially since this is my last meeting. I'm so tired of this. Um, so I'm just spot on with everything said. My personal opinion. Uh, one thing that uh lost in learning from the first year of law is that you, when you start this kind of. Activity. You have to find to uh the test with community units. That was not the case. We have ordinance on file for fifteen years that said you must be R one, and you must have a permit. One seventy eight Riverside, didn't either. So started this whole. Training episode without even obeying the law, and now he wants counsel to come and rescue him. Um. You had to come, the one seven gave her, decided not come to the table of please hands. I'm tired of this. I mean, after about the third FOIA request, I just don't, I don't kind of use this. Um, it can't stop because of a lack of interest, it's because it's all rooms being built. And that's the leveling playing field for anybody in this situation. And the city manager is really good at leveling playing field, so it applies to everybody, it's just not a certain. So um, I'm I'm done with this, nevermind.
I have quite true for our FOIA recording here. I'm wondering if either way, should we make motions and vote on each FOIA appeal separately, or can we vote either?
I would say for maybe. Maybe the best practice could be to do a motion for each appeal. And I know that we have appeals, appeals one, two, three, four, eight, and eleven.
Correct. I'd like to make a motion to deny FOIA appeal number one.
Second level.
Alright, here's why. And FOIA appeal number one, he requesting all written policies, procedures, or guidelines governing ZBA hearings, including the non-limited two rules on speaking rights. Witness questioning, cross-examination, submission of evidence and recordings. Any communications between city staff and ZBA members about scheduling, preparation, or conduct of the ZBA hearing. And records of any prior ZBA decisions to refuse city officials from hearings due to bias on commitment from January first, twenty twenty. All that stuff, of course, this is right to ask for, and we will provide it. But in uh, in the state law. Fees, MCL fifteen, uh, two, four, subsection three. A fee is described, you shall not be charged for the cost of search, examination, review, and the deletion and separation of exempt or non-exempt information. Unless failure to charge a fee would result in unreasonably high costs to the public body because of the nature of their request. My understanding is that request requires going through all the digital and paper records that are not all in one spot, it will take many hours. And therefore, the amount, the good faith estimate charged to him is forty-eight dollars to search for that stuff. When the city makes a good faith estimate, the guidance from the Attorney General. Is that it is reasonable to assume that a public body in making its good faith best effort estimate may take into consideration events or factors. Affecting its ability to produce the requested records. This is Attorney General, it can be seventy-three hundred, uh, Bill Shute. For instance, a technological disruption, an unexpected loss of personnel, or even an unexpectedly high volume of requests. May impact the time within which a public body can fulfill a request. A public body may factor such events into his calculation of his best efforts estimate. If he was asking for things that were readily available and on file and be sent to him very quickly, I'm sure, but he's asking for a very large search. And so I'm I'm given on the first one, the why. And so that is why I think we need to um deny FOIA appeal number one, because it is reasonable. Based on our best effort estimate, that he shares some of the costs for the time our city staff will spend. Working to help his legal defense instead of serving the taxpayers. Take a second on this. I'll second it. Okay, okay, that motion by Councilman Ben, then second by Councilman Ormski to deny. Appeal number one.
You have. Councilman Martin.
Oh, did you? I'm sorry, okay. Alright, so I'll, thanks, then then. Uh, motion by Councilman Ben, then second by our. To deny appeal number one. Any other questions? Roll call, yeah, okay, roll call.
Doug, yes. Mallory.
Yes.
Mel, yes. Darling.
Yes.
Ben.
Yes.
Art.
Yes.
Arts.
Yes.
I have the, it's a next appeal, they don't have all the numbers. I'll make a motion to deny FOIA appeal number two.
I'll second that motion.
Right, for this one, um, it's similar. Believe, what is the difference? Oh, this time it includes correspondence with his sister. But for some reasons, it is expensive time to make in our staff as as a day job. Um, the estimate for this one was. Eighty-one, four. Hey, you can do four, you want to eat four. Hey, counts? Alright, roll call please.
Doug.
Yes.
Mel, yes. Martin.
Yes.
Ormski.
Yes.
Edwin.
Yes.
Darling.
Yes.
Doug, yes.
Okay, get number three. I make a motion to deny FOIA appeal number three. Second level. This one is for all cease and desist letters, citations, or notices of violation issued to properties of man. One seventy-eight Riverside Drive for alleged violations of chapter one twenty or related zoning ordinances concerning. Short-term vacation home rentals. He's also requesting any communications between city manager Dan Sobolski and the zoning code enforcement officer. Regarding enforcement actions against properties suspected of operating vacation rentals. Um, other than the seventy-eight Riverside Drive. And records of any fines, penalties, or resolutions for properties found in violation of chapter one twenty, excluding one seventy-eight Riverside Drive. So same deal that um is estimated to take three and a half hours and have a total cost of sixty-three dollars.
This will make sense with FOIA appeal number three. Cause um, I put in um, I put in the email that I sent you guys that there was some. This may be on my behalf with the city department, and after discussing with Chief Reichenberg. Um, it was concluded that we did not have any applicable records for this. Um, I put the email in there, um, that I did send to Mr. Horowitz, that, you know, after further discussion, Chief Reichenberg. Um, the police chief, um, that I was going to reevaluate FOIA number three, uh, after discussing with chief. Um, and then it was determined that the records design was a record search by the police department was not gonna actually be. Um, conducted, so I did send him the proper paperwork in regard to that certificate of non-assistance. Um, FOIA official FOIA denial, and um, I did send it to Mr. Horowitz, um. But like, I did mention in his email back to me, it was, I have submitted the appeal and will await this to be counted. So, well, really. No much was to appeal there, because I know he was appealing the cost of the FOIA, but after further clarification was had. Um, it was determined, um, how we had no records for, you know, FOIA.
So there was any cost.
Basically, yes, basically, yes. Well, we could still, you know, technically.
It's in front of us.
Yep, I just wanted to make sure that made sense.
Yep. Okay. Do you have any comments?
Uh, it has a labor cost on the next page of sixty-three dollars, but that was.
Yes, I had, yeah, I had some miscommunications with the police department, and then um, after communicating with chief. And the, and chief and I had discussed the FOIA requests together, it was concluded that. We didn't have records for that, so after the clarification, I went back. He had the um certificate of non-assistance records, um, denied FOIA based off. Adding of the couple records, um, for any of the um three asked for or requested records. Um, so, yeah, I did try to resolve that one, but he responded with the, I simply, I couldn't. I did my best to try to.
No, I, I, I think it makes sense just to deny, that's what it's not changing. Anything else? Here, roll call.
Mallory.
Yes.
Doug, yes. Darling.
Yes.
Ormski.
Yes.
Edwin.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Mel, yes.
A number four. I make a motion to deny FOIA appeal number four.
Well, second level.
Okay, FOIA appeal number four is for all records of properties registered as vacation home rentals under chapter one twenty, including registration forms. Paid and renewal records, all enforcing actions, uh, taking against properties and violations of chapter one twenty during this period. Uh, January first, two thousand ten, December thirty, third, twenty-two. And for any communications which may say, but is gonna discuss to the enforcement, non-enforcement of chapter one twenty, including any acknowledgement of the ordinances. Unenforceability or lack of registration compliance. The good faith estimate on this one is one thousand eight hundred and twenty-five dollars thirty-six cents. I'll let, I'll let you explain this. Awesome, I love, you just take a lot of your time.
Sure, so um, it did get explained in the email that was um regarding. FOIA number three, cause um. It does say after further discussion with Chief Reichenberg, the police department is initiated, so then we want to clarify that your requests for violations issued. Between January first, two thousand and ten, and December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two, pertains to time prior to Chief Reichenberg's appointment. Um, with the city, as such, the only way to determine whether any notices of violation related to chapter one twenty were issued under the form. Police chief's supervision is to manually review violation, all violation records from that. That would be Mrs. Temple, who would go through that, so. Um, with speaking with her, that is the cost estimation of going through over. I think she said close to fifteen hundred violations from two thousand and ten to twenty-two, which, in which she has to. Open, read, determine that it's applicable to FOIA, and so on.
Yes, well, I checked in with Ms. Temple, although I don't like to admit it, she's a lot on J versus in standing way there. Take a lot of. Anything else?
Mel. Yes. Mallory.
Yes.
Doug, that's Darling.
Yeah.
Ormski.
Yes.
Edwin.
Yeah.
Martin.
Yes.
Number five? Boy, I tell the.
Oh, we jump to FOIA request number eight.
Great, thank you.
I was in the.
I don't have the number three, so.
Not here to.
Is that the one for your request, or on the waiver next?
This one was regarding the um. MLS?
Yes, okay, so it's like, you know, five, five.
Uh, June, um, June tenth.
That one. Okay, so FOIA request number eight. We already make a motion, if not, I make a motion to deny the request.
I will second that motion.
Okay. Okay, for number eight, he's requesting documents, reports used to form Sobolski's May thirteen, twenty twenty-five MLS statements. He requests all documents, reports, memos, notes, or other materials used by city manager Sobolski. Care support his statements during the main, the city council hearing regarding MLS listing for one seventy-eight Riverside Drive. Including the internal staff reports, third-party reports provided uh related to these statements. Um, he wants all MLS listings or related data for one seventy-eight Riverside Drive of oh one. Two thousand one to twenty twenty-three that were provided to, assessed by, or referenced. By Sobolski and preparing his May thirteen, twenty twenty-five statements, for each listing or dataset include the full listing. Creation or access date, source of the listing, any accompanying notes or correspondence indicating how it was obtained or used. And then correspondence with all realtors, um, including all correspondence between Mr. Sobolski and any realtors, real estate agents. Or real estate firms referencing his May thirteen statement regarding one seventy-eight Riverside Drive. And include any correspondence with any staff or third parties facilitating contact with realtors about this property. Okay, so what'd you send him on this?
The MLS listing he requested, um, the MLS listing that was provided to um. City manager Sobolski was given to um, Mr. Horowitz, as was a certificate, uh, cause he does ask for. Um, all correspondence, emails, letters, memos, text messages between any Ganski, any realtors. As uh, Councilman Edwin stated, and include any correspondence with city staff, with their parties facilitating. Facilitating contact with the O three box property, that doesn't exist. So I was given, I did give him a message about non-assistance of public pressure, so I just didn't pack it. Um, I did send the MLS listing that was sent to him separate, um, to the council. Um, it wasn't right in the packet, just so you do know that what he was sent, um. But the MLS listing was sent, the one that um, is just supposed to use as this reference.
So he's led me in that, the MLS listings are incomplete based on metadata. Essentially, his interpretation of the documents.
Yes.
So we need to deny this one, because the records do not exist, um, we are also not obligated to need records for him. Any comments? Okay, roll call please.
Mel. Yes. Martin.
Yes.
Edwin.
Yes.
Ormski.
Yes.
Darling.
Yes.
Doug. Yes. Mallory.
Yes.
What is the next? I make a motion to deny FOIA appeal number one.
I will second that.
Okay, so for this one, he's requesting audio and or video recording of the June eighteen ZBA hearings. He's requesting the final written decision of the ZBA for the June eighteen hearing, including any findings. On non-conformity, R two variance request, or timing is of my appeal of a cease and desist order. He would like official minutes and any unofficial notes or drafts from the June eighteen ZBA hearings. He'd like all emails, memos, or other communication between all ZBA members, manager Sobolski. Alex Martin, or other city issues, like in our county officials. June first to June nineteen, twenty twenty-five, regarding the hearing, his appeal, or one seventy-eight Riverside Drive. He would like any written submissions or records of oral comments from the public, including his neighbors, for that, Lauren, Boardman, Spangler. Received before hearing or after the hearing, as included in the ZBA packet. And he would also like current ZBA rules, procedures, or guidelines governing hearings as referenced in my due process concerns. Issue, what's the fee that was assessed for this one?
Um, he appealed my extension.
He appealed your extension.
Yes.
And so why was an extension given?
Um, because it has per the extension, the city needed more time to properly search for review and evaluate the requested records additional time is needed. This was FOIA request number eleven of twelve, um, so I didn't. Not gonna lie, I have a lot going on my plate, so I didn't need to put in the extension, um. The, the biggest reason for the extension um was for the. Excuse me, oh, I'm sorry, that lost me, I'll wait for me. Um, was for the correspondence on emails, memos, other communications between ZBA members, uh, Tori, O'Brien, Warren, Budwin, and Saintster. Sobolski and Martin from the first to June nineteenth, that of course would take time to evaluate to see if a um. Estimated cost would need to be given, um. And, I mean, I did send. And I mean, I did send him, I did let him, I did inform him that the audio was available online. Um but simply this for more lights appealed my extension for the reasons listed um. In a pro uh deficient notice of extension, inappropriate blanket extension, failure to honor expediting expedited processing was. Not to expedite a FOIA request unless it's public concern or concern on public safety. Um and then public interest being waiver ignored, there was no fee for this. Yet, um and I'm not saying yet, but there may be, I don't know, I haven't evaluated the FOIA request properly. So and then uh pattern of bad faith and obstruction, so that for a history just for.
All my thinking, I'm just.
Yeah, so like the record is already on the website, but he wanted, I think it was in this one, there's so many. He wanted it, he wanted to be told where it was, and it's like, once again, that's creating a record that doesn't otherwise exist.
I mean, the the minutes, I don't believe the trust were even created at that time. Um so I wouldn't have been able to give them anything. Uh ZBA rules and procedures, I still have to look for those because those are from the first FOIA request. So I'm still, you know, I still am waiting for the cost estimate to come to me, or not the estimate, the composite. To come to the city so I can begin my search for that public comments. You know, we may have um, I know he mentions that they may be in the packet. Um correspondence that he's researched for any decision was not ready at the time of this request. So I did put an extension in for the FOIA request, but he said he did need more time to process the request. And he appealed that section.
So yeah, he requests expedited processing, but nowhere in the Michigan FOIA law or FOIA handbook does it require a. Automatically grant any of that processing. He cites a court case, but when you read it, it doesn't support his art. Um he asks to be able to have in-person inspection under the meetings act, he can come view the draft minutes. Within eight days of the meeting, so the draft minutes are are here somewhere, he can come check them out, we can send it to him. But yeah, confirm online availability, identify the records available on the website, that's us creating a record and he can't view them. So for all that, we need to deny FOIA deal number.
Anybody, yeah, any other comments? Roll call please.
Martin.
Yes.
Badwin.
Yes.
Ormski.
Yes.
Darling.
Yes.
Doug.
Yes.
Mallory.
Yes.
Mel.
Yes.
And my final comment, I want to be real clear, because I know sometimes on the recordings, since I'm projecting, it sounds like I'm angry. Mr. Horowitz has exercised his rights, he is free to do so, but is when our reviewer exercise our rights, sure, we use the fat pay resources. I believe we did a good job of giving it.
Thank you. Alright, bring the thumb. Do the city manager report.
We'll say there's one bar left on my reporter for the battery, so if I have to stop suddenly.
All stopped, right?
About ten seconds here.
Probably the same. Uh concession stand almost completed, it was open for the state championship held there this past weekend. Uh DPW Parks and Rec helped make this project happen, uh they stepped up in a number of cases to help get some of the final items done. Uh so that it could be open for that tournament. The cost is going to be roughly around a hundred twenty-five thousand dollars for the concession stand with bathrooms. Uh a hundred thousand of that is coming from that county grant, uh normally a building of that nature is probably the two hundred, two hundred fifty thousand. Dollar range, so I want to thank some of the contractors for stepping up and helping us out with that to make that possible. Uh for the uh baseball players and parents of of pretty much, I'll I'll say the region because. Uh about eighty-seven percent of the ballplayers are from outside the city limits, uh so it benefits the whole town. At the same time, Children's Trail Project, we're waiting for the approval of from DNR on our choice of contractors, which is Maverick Construction. I'm hoping they're gonna start soon, uh the project is supposed to be done uh substantially complete by November. Uh new our health insurance and opt-out, I I think I mentioned the last time. Um that that we were changing those, the the union did approve their side of the contract, and I have not got the documents done to come here yet. Um but there will be a fifty dollar uh copay uh for health insurance uh for a premium copay. For uh like families, family with children, a twenty-five for single uh individuals or just the employee. Opt-out, uh we're we're paying four hundred for families, three hundred for uh single per month. Uh that was some of those numbers were as high as eight hundred before, uh based on what we changed here. Probably about a clot savings to the city about roughly around forty thousand dollars. Um it's going into fact this next coming paycheck, um it allows our city to keep our current health insurance provider. Uh it also gives the their the employees uh the privilege of keeping their doctors, especially some of the specialists that are hard to come by in this area. The crib light project, uh the entire outside has been painted, uh there's one red panel on. Northside that we cannot get the boom to it, so we gotta figure out another strategy to get that on the roof. Think we got it figured out, uh so hopefully uh we can get that done. Uh all the vegetation's been trimmed back on the boardwalk is also, uh everything was cleaned up along the river. So as you walk down the boardwalk, you can actually look down the boardwalk and see the entire crib light. Uh we built a flower box around the Army Corps of Engineers, if anybody's been out there lately, they put up a new sign at our request. And they also painted the railings going all the way out to the points. Uh and we painted the railings around the uh crib light itself. Uh there was electric cord that was right there, uh that was kind of exposed, uh you know, it was in in case still, but it was exposed. And uh so we did uh cover that up, uh and then again, we're using a fifty thousand dollar grant that we received from the community foundation. Uh we're looking right now at the purchase of benches and tables. Uh we are going to possibly install, we'll just have to see how people feel about it. Before we do that, a sign facing out, so as you're coming in the river, I'll say welcome to the city of Shewagon. Um and again, this is one of our major gateways into our community, we've talked about that since I believe I got here. And we've made some steps in various locations, so this is another good gateway opportunity that we're gonna take. We just don't know what people are gonna feel, we ruin the way the lighthouse looks, we need to put it aside, you put it out of the lighthouse, put it in front of it. So we're still trying to figure that out. Uh we did order the plexiglass uh for along the, a lot of that's cracked and weathered, so we're getting all the glass, we'll work with a local contractor. It's uh we got that ordered, so hopefully it'll be here, they'll install it. Uh and again, most of this work is being done by our staff, the Parks and Rec staff. Uh so when you see it, make sure you thank them for all their hard work, them and DPW of making our parks much, much better. Uh Little Black River in USDA, uh USDA asked us for some cost estimates for cleaning up the river. They also asked us for a report of if that area flooded. How much would it cost us to replace the infrastructure in that area? So I think they're doing a cost benefit analysis, if we give them this much to help clean up, then will it prevent the loss of of this amount of bank? They've been here, Jason did a fantastic report um for them, I think probably gave them even more detail than they they thought they could probably get. But he he did a great job of doing that, um hopefully they keep asking for information, that's a good thing. Whenever you work with a special agent, you can see them asking for more, um they didn't say, hey, look, we're not gonna do this and walk away. Uh storms cleanup, uh one of the things I wanted to point out today, uh on true social, Trump's social, uh true social. Account, he said he's giving the state of Michigan fifty million dollars for the ice storm. Um the problem is, is you had twelve counties that were impacted into fifty million, that's a little over four point five million apiece. Um I know we asked for nine hundred thousand, I know the county was at six or seven million, I think, for some of their issues, the road commission, so. Uh I'm I'll be happy if I get enough to cover that bill you guys approved for me to chip and pride that stuff, I'd be happy if I got the twenty-five. But you know, we're gonna fight to get our fair share of it, um so. I've heard until this, up to this point, I heard from various state and regional people, well, maybe coming, it may not be coming. Again, as Trump mentioned it, but again, it has not came out officially yet. Um chipping's on schedule for sometime in August, uh we're hoping mid-August. Uh we did have Scott Hancock document um the the footprint of the pile that we moved for the baseball. He measured the height and got pictures of him standing in the middle of the pile with uh roller, on the yardsticks and things like that, so. Hopefully we got enough population, we're gonna have to start doing that with that if we don't go for sure if that money's coming or not. Short-term rentals, uh we received six applications for short-term rentals, uh they paid their fees, we have probably I think four. Maybe five that aren't happy with the new law, uh some of them have already regrouped and went other directions, whether they're making them long-term rentals. Um so that's that's in a way a good thing, that they are gonna put those back on the market where family can live in them. Um the uh Mr. Morning uh alluded to this. Uh today, uh the city was served, including myself, uh Alex will be served. Um Mr. Horowitz did file a appeal to his border zoning appeals uh ruling. Um and he also did file a civil suit. So we already turned that over, we found out yesterday he was doing it, we already turned over the documents to our insurance company. And our lawyer, um so my suggestion, if somebody contacts you about this, uh since it is a pending lawsuit. Uh you're uh shouldn't refrain from discussing it in public, whether it's with friends, family, whoever. Or anybody from Mr. Horowitz's side, attorneys, whatever it may be. Um I will know soon, usually the the insurance company will appoint us an attorney. Um and they did that in the the last couple of things, and that that attorney was fantastic. Uh and usually if they point us to the attorney, they pick up the cost for that, um so as soon as I know that, I'll let you know who that person is. Uh so if you do have any uh concerns, you know, questions and that, you can voice them to me, or we can get together with that uh particular attorney. So again, please refrain, uh we don't want to uh put out misinformation or cause us any more undue stress than we need. Uh also, I wanted to thank the folks, uh there were so many of them involved uh that brought that state tournament into town. Uh I went over there on a number of occasions just to drive through there to see what was going on. Uh and it was unbelievable the amount of people it brought to our community and the shops, stores. Uh the Little League obviously was big in that, uh there's uh a number of other individuals, businesses that sponsored, but. It was a great thing, huge economic boom, and I think we, you know, we need to thank them for that efforts. Um and then again, they pulled big time to help get that concession stand open, hopefully they made a lot of money for the Little League this weekend through there.
Is my understanding tomorrow's the finals?
It's either tomorrow or today, I couldn't remember.
And so today he would play on for the last two.
I think it was at noon.
Um it's later than they started to.
Okay. But you go out, went over there, man, there there's there are people everywhere, which is great. And there's people going, you know, in the town, there's people in the city, little kids walking around and getting ice cream and they're, you know, great, we need to do more of those things. And I think from what I heard, a lot of good positive reviews, um they didn't have to use outhouses, they got to use our facilities. So I think that was a big plus that we got that, so it's already producing dividend, and I think it it'll probably bring more tournaments here. Now that we have some upgraded facility.
I just told there's another one this weekend.
There's chat and then.
Travel teams this weekend.
Gotcha.
And then there's the the chaos tournament comes up too, same time, softball. That's coming too, and that that's usually, that's usually the weekend. The uh probably has their uh traffic counts in the downtown, that's usually when it's the highest, it's during that chaos tournament, so it'd be interesting to see. How this one did on traffic counts too.
For sure.
So I have, Mr. Mayor.
Alright, thank you. So you quit, nothing?
No.
Nothing else, okay.
Colin Ramon here to change the watershed. Um he mentioned that they were kind of on that, they came for the border. And it'll be able to cause a problem, and so sort of uh one, we have a. Uh right-of-way toward by the Gulf Coast to get to the. And so I think you need to be informed of that, also to that, a number of years ago. We had somebody that on the border, you know, that was attached to, and the city uh ruled that they couldn't. That was a court case, and they were little bit, they couldn't ask it, so. That helped me to that we got more right-ways also in other places.
I think the court case was the one side of the dam at the Gulf Coast. There was a passenger, there was. That guy, when we went to fix that dam, this uh within the last couple of years. Yeah, they 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 didn't have a problem, they just asked, hey, you know, can you tear it up? Smooth it back out like that, no problem.
But no, they, we had a lawsuit back a number of years ago before that. And the people were, had actually fenced, had their cattle pasture.
On the.
On the side of the uh property, and um and they lost the lawsuits, had to take their stuff out of. The reasoning that it was uh, it was that, you know, these animals were gonna take and knock the bank down and stuff with their hooves and stuff like that. For erosion and so forth, so there's uh some kind of a right-of-way that could cause the city to be able to move. You know, make that move.
I have a box about this big, and about that high, full of documents that have easements and access and yeah.
But anyhow, this is the point that um some of these things, I don't think the. One manager knows, well, and so my.
Yeah, and I have a couple of questions also, if I may. Is the uh Garfield Avenue project on time?
That's good.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, great.
And if you guys got complaints, which we did, under using the gravel road down the street from there. Uh to line up trucks and bring trucks in, and when they go around that corner, those heavy trucks loaded, kind of mushroomed out that corner. And we already told most of the neighbors, hey, look, we're we'll come in and we'll regrade that, smooth that out, so you hear that, you know.
Okay, that's the case. And then uh the Lincoln Avenue by the school culvert, does that happen this year?
No, uh that that was postponed because uh Department of Transportation, this was a few months ago, would not let us bid it out. Until July, which if we bid it out in July, there's no way we'd get it done before school, so we talked to the superintendent and talked to uh. M. Dot and said, hey, look, can we do that next year, all, you know, there was rumors floating around, that came back to me a couple of times. That, hey, you guys are gonna lose the money, now we already have everything approved, and in September, uh we'll bid it out in September, so. Construction will be able to start as soon as school is out in in May or June, whatever it is next year, so that's a, that's a. Was a really bad rumor floating out that we lost the money, so, okay.
Okay, and then the last one, Eastern Avenue, did you get money to regravel that, like a month ago?
We did, we regraveled the whole stretch of it, uh from, I think, the dump going. Not not back toward the highway, back the other way. Yes, that's that's all been redone, uh we ran out of gravel, trust me.
Yeah, it it looks like.
I I could probably use, if you ran from Eastern back towards town. Um I could, I I think they gave me a number, and I got it somewhere, I think it was, I need another hundred twenty-five or a hundred and thirty thousand dollars, if I remember correctly. So we made it to that point, smoothed it out, says, okay, if we have to, we can come down Lincoln, we can come down Eastern to get to the dump. And that's the two things, we were waiting, if we got money from PMA, oh oh then we would do, try to do the rest, so yeah, we ran out of money.
That's understandable, that's all I got.
Alright, I got a question. The, there's a lot of brush and a lot of streets built that are kind of piled up in random places, is that just kind of the. It is what it is type of thing, because we had a massive ice storm, or are we gonna like try and do something?
We usually have a fall brush cleanup.
Right, yeah, I know.
Um the the problem is, a lot of people did not get their brush out, even though we extended it, we pretty much ran it for a month and. Month and a half, I think.
It just kept out, yeah.
Yeah, and then we kept picking it up, picking it up, and then we said, no more. Yeah, and then we kept picking it up, picking it up, and then we said, no more, and then people put it out there. So we've encouraged people to pick that up, and, and soon, uh, if they don't pick it up, we're gonna have to start. And we did this last year too, when there was no storm, they ended up giving a couple people some tickets to say, hey, look, this has gotta go, or you're gonna get ticketed by Monday.
We're gonna try to best.
Yes, you will try.
Okay.
Before by my sister. And there's a pile that's on that alleyway, and I've spent, uh, since almost day long. And I think they just have missed it, because the alleyway doesn't get greased too far, but just to mention that, 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 that problem was really very.
Oh, uh, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. All right, gonna move on then, thank you. Public comments, I'll open public comments, you have anything you'd like to put in, and Stan, state your name, you have three minutes.
Louis Valance, this is an evidence, um, just wondering, uh, uh, corner of, uh, Lincoln and Lothar yet. Um, you have, uh, a line of sight issue with those, uh, uh, cactils in the ditch. Need cleaned out. Um, my suggestion would be is we need to skim those ditches out and, uh, put a membrane in. Put a, uh, uh, maybe, uh, topsoil over that with some sort of, uh, mixture in there. So these things don't come back, this is an invasive species, you can get, uh, DNR and, uh, Eagle, uh, financial grants to get rid of these invasive species, which is the cactils. They may look nice, but they are invasive species, they need to be removed. Uh, and other than that. We still have that culvert on Eastern Avenue. It has not been repaired, shared off on the top, uh. Uh, show the pictures to, to some council people, but, uh, it does so, show that the top has been shared off by graders and by snowflows. And it is on the gravel portion just before the block top. Um, by this, the speed on the sign, it runs on an angle, it's easily seen. So you need to get that done before you put, uh, your gravel on that. Because otherwise, we're just gonna end up continuing flooding on the north side of, uh, I mean, the, uh, west side of Eastern Avenue. There's all that's damming up, and we get flooded out. And we need to get that water going north to, uh, Eastern Rain, not to Sanctuary's ditch, it's going to Eastern Rain. Other than that, um, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, I'm in Schmuygan. Um, the dog park committee met with Jeff Lawson last Friday at ten in the morning. And he's, um, we have all the fencing up, we talked about the fences that are going to go in. There will be a pavilion in, um, both sides for people to set out, there is water there. The only thing left to do is, we do need some more signage to put up, and, um. Also asking people if they'd like to contribute anything, like a tree or something for the dogs to play with or whatever. But this has been going on for a while, and I'm just happy to announce that it has come to fruition. And Jeff even said people could take their dogs there now, so we have a small one and a large one. And black fencing, you know, looks very, very nice.
I have a brief comment, I'll save it from here. Um, I'd like to thank Diane Mills for her service over the last few years. She's been wonderful to work with, she liked to do some things with me, truly understanding, inquisitive, hardworking. Even when we disagreed, we tried at the end, um, we took her in, we still respected each other, and we had a lively debate in here. And it was all good, and I wish her the best in, uh, on your adventure.
Inducting on that, um, I was gonna say this from my C H C upload here, but, um. So this has been a real educational, uh, experience for me, I mean, um, I've gone to the Hill for, uh, the Fed Acquisition of Weapon Systems. This is a lot harder than looking at the folks on Hill. Some folks think that, uh, I'm gonna say a special thank you to our city manager, because, uh, you, um. You might begin in working with your manager, you're straight up forward, and, uh, you try and do what is best for everybody. There's been times that, contrary to what the, um, that we have heard, like, uh, you know. Gaming doesn't pull our strings, each and every one of us on council have our own opinions and viewpoints in everything that we do. Um, but many times that Dan and I have gotten guts, to the point where, uh, you know, I've taken behind closed door and tell them what a fool I am. And so that's happened one of the ones, and Dan, you text me a couple of days later and say, you're still mad at me, and I said, I'm not mad at you. It's just like, you know, do you ever have, uh, once with your wife, and he goes, me today? And that's just the way that it is on town city council, you know, you might not agree with each other, but, you know, at the end of the day, we all have a strength for each other. And, uh, we work to make the city of Chicago together, and I wish each and every one of you the best wishes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Diane.
Do I have any other public comments? Okay, all right, I'll close public comments. Uh, committee updates, you have any committee updates?
Housing committee met, uh, their chief commissioner, Short. If you use your expertise, if invited to centuries. And, um, they, they got wind of the ordinance about our, um. Short-term rentals going away for R1 and R2, and that opened up the possible opportunity to contact those folks. That, uh, that have those properties that are no longer eligible. They may want to look into, um, long-term housing at low income, you know, become the Section Eight voucher book. Whether or not that it comes to fruition, but that's an opportunity, I mean, so, you wish you knew anything?
Good. Yes. Okay, if nothing else, then you can start. What's your, oh, that's what I'm saying, first, we, I had to.